So I will speak to this a little bit later, but we had conversations with the STO, as agent for sale, on the method of sale. And we determined that the best method for this would be a public sale on a negotiated basis rather than a private sale or a competitive sale. So CalSTRS, once the bonds are issued, they will have the ability, the right, but not the requirement, to be able to prepay the bonds within at least 10 years. It's a standard 10-year call feature would be on the bonds. We will explore shorter call features such as nine years or eight years. Typically, if you have a shorter call feature on a bond issue, it will increase your borrowing cost. So we want to look at the cost benefit of having a shorter call feature. And we'll do that closer to pricing. So at Management Direction, we are expecting these bonds to be classified as green bonds, given the nature of the project and the carbon reduction targets that are expected. There is a process where you can either, as the borrower, you can self-certify as a green bond, or you can seek third-party certification that it's meeting other standards. So at this point, CalSTRS is exploring all the options. So the primary financing documents are as follows. The site lease, the lease agreement, and the trust agreement are prepared by a bond counsel. The preliminary and final official statements and the continuing disclosure agreement will be prepared by disclosure counsel. And underwriters counsel will prepare the bond purchase agreement. So this is the -- so this is actually -- try to be a simple version of the diagram for the flow of funds for the bonds. So in the middle is the project to be constructed, the Phase II headquarters. So the bondholders will, through purchasing the bonds, generate the bond proceeds. They will be passed off to the trustee, and the trustee will provide access to those funds to CalSTRS to build the project. On a going-forward basis, CalSTRS will make lease payment at the bottom. They will be paid to IBank as the lessor. IBank will pass those payments directly on to the trustee, and the trustee will then use those matching payments of lease payments to make the bond debt service payments.
Oh, yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions. And just going back to the ratings, why do you assume that Fitch would have a slightly higher rating than Moody's and S&amp;P?
Because at this point, they rated the enhancement program a little bit higher. They were rated at AA+. So compared to Moody's that rated at AA3, S&amp;P rated the enhancement program of CalSTRS was AA-. So we're working off those ratings, and because it's a lease transaction, it involves a little more risk with appropriation of payments. So we actually just notch off that by one gradation. So the AA+ becomes a AA, et cetera. So these are the assumptions we have now that help us determine the borrowing cost.
Okay. And are you planning to do a ratings call or an in-person meeting?
It'll be in-person meetings, and Sacramento is our plan for -- in August.
And then on the green bonds, can you talk a little bit about the market for green bonds? And if there is -- if there are differential in rates between green bond rates and municipal rates?
With tax exempt bonds, there's been no proven cost savings benefit from issuing green bonds, whether, you know, third-party certified or self-certified. If you were to sell taxable bonds with a larger base, a global investor base, we have seen benefits there from making those bonds green and reduce borrowing costs. But you're much better off going tax exempt than going taxable and trying to capture some small benefit of green bonds.
Okay. And what about ongoing green bond certification disclosures? Is there any requirement for that?
We are looking at that now. We don't expect to have any legal obligations made by CalSTRS regarding disclosure on that.
But if we go the official certification route, we will have obligations to report back to the certification agency.
Is that on an annual basis?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I apologize. You were -- I wasn't sure if we were doing questions now or at the end.
No, that was fine.
So I have a question a couple of slides back. Could you just talk a little bit about the -- what we looked into in terms of using our existing headquarters, you know, for the bond sale? And just -- I just wanted to better understand why we were not able to use that and, you know, what that will mean in terms of impact since we're going to be using the new building instead.
Right. Happy to. My preface up by saying, when we were before the board in November, I believe it was, and talked about the analysis of building the project or leasing, et cetera, at that point, we had presumed that we had to use the project to be constructed as the lease asset. So those costs incorporated two years of capitalized interest. So we were on the high side, cautious with those debt service estimates. So right now, the project, roughly $300 million is our target for valuation. So we're comparing the size of the bond issue of 300 to 340 against the value of this building. And the market value of this building was determined to be less than that figure. It needs to be at least as much as the size of the borrowing. The second part of that test, and I think it can be either one of these two tests, a market value or a fair rental value test. So we're looking at debt service on these bonds to be the neighborhood of 20 million. And the fair rental value of this building on a market value basis was not quite 20 million a year. So if we could have used this building as the lease asset, it would have allowed us to avoid capitalized interest. That would have been reducing the size of the borrowing and reducing debt service.
So we ended up exactly where we presented to the board when you made your decision.
Right.
I did want to say that. We were actually looking for maybe more advantage to the transaction here. So I don't want anyone to feel that there's a -- we end up less than what we proposed, but it turned out this --
Where we thought we were going.
Yeah. It turned out this didn't pan out as another way of getting more leverage on the transaction, which would be nice, but it didn't work out.
And so if we're using the new building, then are we -- we are just -- we can -- we're sort of justifying or asserting that the value of that building or the lease value will be -- meet the numbers that we need to hit for the bonds? Is that right?
Yeah, by its nature, it is tied to this project cost.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Just curious, what did the evaluation of this building come in at?
I don't have that offhand.
It wasn't very far below, but it just wasn't quite enough. So I don't recall at the top of my head either. But it was -- it was -- we -- it was analyzed for a little while because it looked like it might work for a little bit, and then it just ultimately, at the end of the day, just didn't pan out.
So smidge below 300 million?
I believe so. I don't have those papers with me, but yes, I believe that was the conclusion.
What's the size of this building in square footage terms? Do we know that?
410.
410,000? Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. So the legal structure, I'd like to just take a few moments to run through the financing documents for the benefit of the board. So we have a bond resolution, and we have a reimbursement resolution. The bond resolution, we expect it to be adopted by your board at the May meeting. And this will authorize issuance of the bonds. It'll establish parameters of borrowing cost, the size of the borrowing, which is measured in par amount, and will set a limit on underwriter compensation for their fee for underwriting the bonds. That resolution will also authorize execution and delivery of the financing documents and the distribution of the preliminary and the final official statements. The second resolution to come before you in May will authorize reimbursement from bond proceeds of hard cost expenditures that may be made before the bonds are issued. And reimbursement of soft costs is not required per IRS regulations for tax exempt bonds. This resolution does not in any way obligate issuance of the bonds by CalSTRS. What it does is, since you plan to issue the bonds in mid-October, if you incur high hard costs before then that you'll pay from funds on hand, it allows reimbursement of those costs when the bonds are issued. So the site lease is the first of two leases. Essentially, CalSTRS will lease the project site, the land, to the IBank. And through the next lease, IBank will lease the land and the project back to CalSTRS. That's the lease agreement. So and the lease agreement will contain provisions relating to the term, the payment, abatement of rent, the maintenance obligations of CalSTRS, insurance obligations, and defaults and remedies for non-payment of lease payments. That document will be executed by the IBank and CalSTRS. The last primary bond document is the trust agreement. So that's executed by the IBank and the trustee, and it pledges the revenues and property to bondholders. So it pledges the lease payments through to bondholders that IBank receives as the lessor. It creates the funded accounts held by the trustee. It's set forth -- it will set forth the terms of the bonds, like redemption provisions, payment dates, et cetera. It'll lay out the responsibilities and duties of the trustee and will establish the rights and interests of the bondholders. So the official statement, there will be a preliminary and a final. The difference between the preliminary and the final is essentially we -- the preliminary official statement is substantially complete. It's what delivered to investors before the sale. It's what they review when they decide to make a decision to purchase the bonds. Once the bonds are priced, then information is then integrated into the official statement, and it goes from being preliminary to final. On an ongoing basis, CalSTRS will have obligation to file information with the trustee as the dissemination agent. This will be in the form of annual audit, et cetera, that Kevin will speak to a little bit more. The bond purchase agreement is what sets out the terms of the bonds, the coupon rates, the yields, the redemption provisions, the actual debt service payments, executed by the underwriter, the IBank, CalSTRS, and the State Treasurers Office as agent for sale. So the sources and uses of the bonds. So this is where we are now with the preliminary sizing of the bond issue. So if you look at the bottom right, we have the use of bond proceeds. We have the $300 million project fund. We have capitalized interest, which will cover interest payments for 30 months. And then we have the financing costs that will -- that's competition to the financing team and also to the underwriter. So that adds up to roughly $338.6 million. So we will generate that amount through the bond sale. The par amount of bond issue will be 307.6, and the difference is called original issue premium. So with a bond issue, unlike with a mortgage, you're not paying -- you're not paying setting one rate. You're essentially setting, if you have 30 years of payments, you have 30 maturities, you're setting 30 years, 30 different payments. Each maturity has its own coupon rate and its own yield, and those are worked up to create the full par amount. It's been pretty common in the market for the past few years for investors to like premium couponing, which is where the coupon rate is set above the yield on the bonds. So what that does, it allows the issuer to issue a lower par amount, and it's -- the difference is covered by the original issue premium. So if you were to sell the bonds at par, where your coupon and yield are equal, you would have no original issue premium, and your par amount would need to be 338.6 million. But because we're selling these at a premium, where the investor essentially pays a higher price for that higher coupon, that allows you to sell a lower par amount and still generate the proceeds you need of 338.6 million. So this bond sizing is based on these assumptions we have here. We, right now, we're presuming to close on October 16th, 30 years of repayments at the credit ratings we mentioned earlier. These numbers are based on interest rates as of January 28th, plus a cushion of 50 basis points or half a percent. We've actually seen improvement in rates since then, so we probably have a cushion now of 70 basis points now in these numbers. So if we were to price the bonds today, we would bring these costs down by 0.7% from these numbers. But to be cautious, not knowing where the market's going to be on October 1st, we've added a cushion on interest rates. The capitalized interest fund that will be outstanding for 30 months will be invested. Right now, we're presuming a rate of 250. It will be invested according to the permitted investments in the trust agreement, which are essentially U.S. Treasury's highly-rated instruments where your principal is guaranteed. There's no principal at risk on that. So right now, we're using a rate of 250 on those funds. And the project fund will also be invested for roughly a period of two years, and for now, we are not assuming a rate on those dollars. When those funds would be invested, that would just generate additional project fund dollars to CalSTRS. And if there's excess at the end of the project, you could use that, apply that to make your next debt service payment. So our numbers are based on, you know, CalSTRS has the right to prepay starting in year 10. This all ties into a borrowing cost of -- projected borrowing cost of 4.25%. The annual lease payments, which is the same as debt service, would be 20.6 million. And then, given the structure of the principal amortization, the average life of the borrowing is just about 20 years. So apologize for the small graphics here, but we're trying to squeeze a lot on the page. So we have three items here. One is the capitalized interest period at the top. This shows you that for the first 30 months, you're essentially paying interest only, and your cap i funds will cover the cost. So your net debt service during the cap i period will be zero in all of those months. So commencing with October 1st, 2022, we're projecting that you would start making net payments on the bonds without cap i. So item number two on the right shows, on an annual basis, your debt service for the projected 30 years. So principal amortizes every year. We're amortizing in a way to produce equal annual payments of roughly 20.6 million on the bonds. And the graphic in item three shows roughly that 20.6 million payment per year, and you can see the split between principal and interest over time. In terms of method of sale, so we were very involved with the agent for sale for the bonds, which is the State Treasurers Office. We had multiple conversations with them regarding what is the best method for CalSTRS. We looked at public offerings. It would be either a competitive or a negotiated sale. Also considered, could this be issued through a private placement or a direct loan? Given that the size is fairly large, at 300 million plus, over 30 years, it would be difficult to find private investors or banks that were willing to give you a rate through that method of sale that would be better than going through a public offering. So we decided to proceed with the public offering. At that point, based on other assumptions, and that'd be on the next page, we determined that the best method of sale would be a negotiated sale versus a competitive sale, where the bonds are just put out to bid, and underwriters submit a bid. That's a competitive sale. So based on a few factors, we felt that a negotiated sale would produce the best results for CalSTRS, the lowest borrowing cost. So even though CalSTRS name is well-known to investors, they're not really well-known as a borrower. So we think that that's one reason that negotiated sale, which through which there's more interface between the underwriters and the team of potential investors to describe the transaction, answer questions, that that method lent itself better to this through that discussion. Also because we do have some construction risk, meaning that until you actually occupy the facility, and if you're beyond the cap i period, you couldn't be legally obligated to make payments, we wanted to assuage any concerns of investors about that by having -- being able to have a dialogue with them to discuss the nature of that risk through the process. Now, we view that risk as very minimal, but it is something we expect investors to raise and want to be able to answer their questions. Given the size of the issue at north of 200 million, lease transactions, especially in California, are normally sold through a negotiated method. And lastly, should market volatility be a concern when we price the bonds in October? A negotiated sale gives us more flexibility to change the sale date based on market timing. With a competitive sale, you are somewhat locked into selling bonds at a specific date and a specific time. So I'll wrap up with the discussion of the financing schedule. So we expect to be back in front of this board at the May meeting to authorize the bond and take the related actions. Between now and then, we'll be providing draft documents to the IBank for their approval process, and we expect to seek conceptual approval from the IBank of the borrowing at their May 22 meeting. We will work through the summer on the credit ratings, and we'll have those in hand from the three agencies by September 4th. At this point, we believe we'll have the project GMP determined by mid-September. So once that is known, we could finalize the offering document and post that for sale by mid-September. We like to have it on the street for a week or two before the sale, so we would expect to sell around October 1st. And then after that, it's pretty rapid to closing. We'll close within two weeks.
Mike, can you explain the --
Oh, I'm sorry. The guaranteed maximum price on the project.
Sure.
GMP.
So, one, I feel like I just bought a house all over again with some of those charts and amortization, anyway. Two, I want to give a shout out to our former board member, Paul Rosenstiel, because I have a new appreciation for him and for what you guys do. This is -- it's fascinating, actually. I've been kind of eager to have this conversation because I don't know a lot about bond financing, so I appreciate your expertise. And I was just curious, who buys these bonds? Like, who will be the -- what's the marketplace like? And I don't -- I mean, I know a little bit about bonds, but I just am curious, who's the audience or who will be buying the bonds?
Typically, mutual funds with tax exempt specialty funds, whether it's California or just national tax exempt, insurance companies will buy them, especially towards the 20 or 30-year timeframe. We would hope that we would get some smaller retail purchases between years 1 through 10 on the maturities, which would be, you know, high net worth investors, mom and pops. The bonds will be sold in $5,000 denoms, so they can submit orders. And the process essentially is that the underwriter will, working with our team and us and agent for sale, we will post the official POS. We will, based on very current market conditions, we will post proposed interest rates for the sale. We will start to take interest, I'm sorry, orders on those over the course of two or three hours on a Tuesday or Wednesday morning. We'll come back if we have -- if the issue was fully sold and we have orders that match the amount we need to sell. There's usually no adjustments needed to the pricing. If orders exceed the amount of what we're trying to sell, we can actually go back to investors and reduce the rates, improve the borrowing cost. If the opposite is true, which I hope it will not be, where orders are less than the amount we look to sell, we might have to increase interest rates a little bit to match that -- match supply and demand. But that is essentially the process in a 30-second overview.
While we're waiting for that next slide to come up.
So the next time you'll be before us, it will be in May, and that's when we will be asked to take a specific action. So for the purpose of being vulnerable, I feel inadequate during this presentation because I'm not a bond finance person. So I have a lot of questions. I would assume I probably could speak to people in our investment staff relative to your presentation. Maybe they could help guide me with some questions that I may have around the assumptions, et cetera. So I don't even know where to begin with the questions, but that's okay, because we don't have to take action today. And I think the overview was really helpful because it raised my level of knowledge about this a little bit more. But there are three or four levers within that presentation that I think probably drives everything, but I'm just not exactly sure which ones those are, but I'm sure there are people here that do, so that we're asking the right questions around oversight and risk. And maybe it would be best, once I get those formulated, I can direct them to you offline between the meetings, so that when we come back in May, I have a level of confidence to take the appropriate action.
Yeah, I would just underscore what Harry said. This was helpful, but I think I'm still -- I'll take some time to wrap my head around this as well. My other question is, is this -- because we are issuing -- we are issuing the bonds, this is not part of our investment portfolio? I mean, we're --
No.
Okay. But I guess when we look more broadly at the efforts that CalSTRS is engaged in around sustainability, you know, if these are issued as green bonds, this is part of our story in terms of the new building construction. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Keith?
The reimbursement resolution, there is a --
Yes.
Page seven. The reference to hard cost expenditures and soft costs that are going to be reimbursed in the proceeds, what are they? What are hard costs and what are considered soft costs? And who pays them before the bond proceeds come in?
Right. A hard cost, it's sort of -- soft cost, well, let me start with the soft. Planning, design, permitting. Hard cost is sort of, you know, moving dirt and building stuff. And the reason why you do that reimbursement resolution is to position yourself so in the event you start spending some hard costs, you do site work, you do things like that before the bonds are actually issued, it allows you to reimburse yourself from the tax exempt proceeds from those costs that you spent before the bond deal. The preliminary costs, you're allowed to reimburse yourself even if they occurred before the bond deal, but you can't with the hard costs unless you do the reimbursement resolution.
So we are, CalSTRS is making those payments from whatever we have and then get reimbursed from the proceeds?
I -- not even -- yes. I think the short answer is yes. You'd spend it from your own pre-construction beginning costs and then reimburse yourself.
And the decisions about moving forward with actually making, if there are hard costs, moving the dirt or whatever it is, is something that -- who makes those decisions? You know, to start spending the money before the bond?
I think that would be the project team presumably, the CalSTRS project team.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Brian, you wanted to weigh in?
I did. I wanted to weigh in, just a little commentary or color on Harry's questions and concerns. One of the things we're doing behind the scenes is working with Kevin and even had conversations with Harvey about what is appropriate to put in your lap and what's appropriate for you to delegate to staff. So at some point, when we come back, there will be a resolution, and the resolution will include some delegation to staff to execute the necessary documents and do those other things, as opposed to all of you becoming experts and reviewing the trust agreement and those type of things. And I only wanted to mention that because I think that that's totally appropriate. It's the way it's done. But I also wanted to just be able, maybe to lower a couple ticks of blood pressure so that we wouldn't all be asked to review the lease and the trust agreements. Not that we wouldn't get you the answers to your questions, but I did want to tell you, and I think Kevin's going to talk to you a little bit about what you're actually going to be asked to vote on, but I wanted to jump in there.
Thank you, Brian.
That's helpful, Brian. And yeah, certainly don't want to become the expert, but guaranteed maximum expenditure is an important factor for, I think, all of us. The interest rate that is used, I think, is an important factor. The credit rating and how the decision was made around that decision might be helpful for us to know. Monitoring soft costs and the hard costs along the way are really kind of where I'm looking to land. Thanks.
All right. And this is probably as good a time as any to let you all know that after our conversation the last time about the bond issuance and stuff, Paul had requested that we have, in the oversight, that we planned to have the investment committee chair and the board chair be the two entities, the two people that -- from the board that were going to be overseeing the whole project. And Paul had made the suggestion that during the time that we're doing the bond financing, we actually have somebody that knows something about bonds do that. Well, knowing we, Sharon and I and Jack, we talked about actually asking Paul to do that, but then taking into consideration that Paul might not be here, then that was not necessarily an appropriate thing for us to ask. And we reached out to another board member that we felt that would be expert within that bond issuance world, and they expressed every confidence that the presentations that we would be receiving from you all and then from staff was enough to have that oversight. And so we made the decision not to make that part of the oversight. So it is the investment committee chair and the board chair for right now that are the oversight committee. And that'll be that way throughout the project unless we -- unless there's another decision made by the board to go in a different route. All righty. Okay. Kevin?
Great. So I'm going to give just a few-slide presentation on the CalSTRS responsibilities under the federal securities laws in connection with the offering. Just by way of background, I gave a -- this is about a half dozen slides. I gave a sort of a 40-slide, 90-minute version of this to a half dozen, or eight or 10 of the CalSTRS folks as well, to go through this in much more detail. The folks that are actually going to be involved, including Julie in the preparation of the actual offering document. Why is disclosure necessary? You'll be issuing securities in the public markets. And as Mike described, you could avoid some of this by doing a direct loan with a bank or a private placement or a -- or a private placement or a, but it's widely accepted that the cheapest cost of money, the lowest borrowing cost to you would be through the sale in the public capital market. So that's why you're doing it. Because you're accessing the public capital markets, the investors in the securities have certain rights under the federal securities laws, and the basic rule is that you have to give investors all material information in connection with the sale. The basic framework, you may have heard of things like the 33 Act or the 34 Act. Those are the seminal federal securities laws. They were passed after the stock market crash of 1929 because there wasn't any rules before then. The, the big difference between a municipal entity such as yourself and a corporate entity borrowing is a corporate entity actually has to register their securities with the Securities Exchange Commission. There's very elaborate prescriptive rules on exactly what those corporate prospectuses have to say. You don't have to do that. No municipal or no public entity has to register. However, both corporate securities, corporate issuers and municipal governmental issuers are subject to the anti-fraud rules under the Securities Act. The basic rule is it shall be unlawful for any person, and A really doesn't come into play, but B, to make any untrue statement of a material fact. So full stop. So every number, every description, every factual statement in the offering document must be correct. And what's good in your context is you put out a lot of published information. The crux of the disclosure to the market will be your audited financial reports and probably perhaps your actuary reports, because they provide a lot of information about sort of the long-term sustainability of CalSTRS. So we wouldn't envision having much more than that. I also service disclosure councils in the state of California, so when they do a general obligation bond offering or a public works board, in addition to putting their offering document in, they also have to put in 100 pages of other disclosures. We would not anticipate that in your context. For the most part, the audit and the actuary reports will speak for themselves. So the second part of the rule is to omit to state, it's unlawful to omit to state a material fact necessary in order to make the statements which are made in light of the circumstances under which they were made, not misleading. So what that means is what's not in the document that should be there? So you could have a document that has every single word in it that is completely true, but it doesn't tell the story because it's not talking about something that it should be. One good thing that you all do is risk reports, for instance, and that's what you really need to make sure the investors understand, the risks of the transaction. You regularly do risk analysis, and so that will be very helpful as a checklist for us to make sure that when that offering document goes out, it accurately provides all of the material information. Materiality standard, whether or not a substantial likelihood that a reasonable investor would consider the information important in deciding. Some folks sort of mistakenly fall into the trap. That only means you have to tell, talk about things that'll make you not pay the bonds or that will result in a default on the bonds. But the reality is, is that other factors might affect the credit rating going forward and other factors. So it's not like we just stop, say, oh, we have a great credit rating and therefore we don't need to talk about anything else other than that. You have to, there'll be elaborate conversations, usually with these official statements, they, by the time you actually post them, it's draft 20 or 25, and there'll be a whole series of conference calls and meetings in which the entire working group pours over it, word after word, to sort of make sure we're all satisfied. Does this contain exactly everything that it should contain? When do the rules apply? New offerings, this transaction you're about to do in October, an annual report as, as part of the, in order for the underwriter to buy the bonds, under the federal securities laws, an issuer of bonds has to sign a contract in which they agree to provide annual updates of the information that was in the official statement, as well as certain event filings. So when you make that annual report, the securities rules will apply to that as well. But the first one will be due a year or so after you do the deal in 2020. And any other circumstance where an issuer is speaking to the market, and this might affect you as board members, whether or not a sort of a speech or a presentation implicates the federal securities laws depends on who's talking and who they're talking to and what they're talking about. So for instance, in your role, if you speak to a stakeholder group and, I'm making statements up, and you make statements that, that, you know, CalSTRS is healthy and there'll be, you know, everything is going well and we're working hard, and those sorts of statements don't implicate the federal securities laws because it's not reasonable for someone who hears that presentation to then go out and buy or sell a bond based on it. On the other hand, if Julie goes to a municipal finance analyst conference and puts a slide up about your financial performance to a group full of bond investors, well, it's reasonable to think that investment decisions will be made on that basis. So therefore, they would apply. My particular caution, and it's actually in the next slide, is that when we're in the bond marketing, I would not envision that board members would, would be sort of talking about the bond offering during the course of it. But you should be very careful if you're asked about something during the bond marketing period in October, and, and really it's sort of stick to the, stick to the OS. There'll be, at that point, the document will be prepared, so it'll be important to be consistent with that. The disclosure, so we'll prepare this official statement. First, it starts as a preliminary official statement. It describes the bonds, what are the interest rates, what are the redemption provisions, what are the payment dates, who the issuer is and who you are. And that's what has to contain all information, all the material information for investors. It's your document. We will, it will reside on our sort of word processing system, and it will have the underwriter's name at the bottom of it, but at the end of the day, CalSTRS owns it, so it owns it. So it's important that, from the CalSTRS perspective, of course, that it be correct and complete and transparent. Summary slide. For you as board members, I think your critical duty is to make sure that a very robust disclosure process is in place in which senior staff officials are involved. When, when folks get into trouble sometimes is when they turn a blind eye to it, they lower-level staffers or assign the responsibility of taking care of the offering and preparing the offering document. I can tell you that so far, it's the most senior staff that have been involved in a very, in a very focused way, and I would anticipate that to continue on through the end. You've hired reputable, good professionals. I think the involvement of the, I guess that's a self-serving statement.
That's okay.
But the involvement of the state treasurer's office, the agent of sale, is something that I think should give you significant comfort because they know what they're doing. It's something they do, you know, a dozen times a year, the largest issuer in the country. So the fact they're involved should give you comfort. So, and the big thing is, is, and what I find, and I do this a lot all over the place, and what I find it's sort of culturally, you know, there are, organizations have sort of cultures of transparency or they're not. And when you get into trouble is when people are trying to put political spin on offering documents or they're trying to just not be transparent. And so it's important, and what I've seen in the board meetings I've attended in accordance with that, it seems to be your culture, and it clearly has been the direction from the staff we've been involved in that, you know, there's no, there's no secrets. It's all laid out on the table and there's no concern, at least from my perspective, that the offering document, when it's done, will be anything other than fully compliant with the federal securities laws.
That's good. All right. Any questions? Kevin? Joy?
So, this is to Kevin or to Brian, but will the, will the offering document be something that the board itself has to approve, or is that something that the staff will, or Brian, you, Harvey, others will approve?
We will put it together, working with Kevin. And I think what we will, I think the appropriate engagement with the board is to provide you with what is we're disclosing. So out of that 40-plus pages, there's probably about four. And just give a check on whether or not you feel that there's anything missing from your seat as a board member. Is there anything that you, in your own knowledge, think that staff should include that's not included? I don't think you'll have anything because as, we're very transparent, all of our financial information's out there, all of our risk information, all of our actuarial information. But that is, I think, the one engagement we'd like to see from, from the board before you approve the resolution. So I think, and Kevin and I have had multiple discussions about this as well as Harvey.
We're anticipating that in May.
That's the schedule. Yeah.
Yeah, and I didn't ask the question because I think that the board should approve it, or write it, or sign off on every word. I think, just going back to some of the questions from the other board members, just trying to understand what are, what's appropriate for our level of oversight or accountability. And, you know, would also want Kevin to make sure that what, the way that we're handling it is consistent with others that you've advised.
Well, I will put Kevin on the spot. He is your disclosure counsel. So if he says it's okay, then that's the person we're relying on him. So we will negotiate that and, and make sure that that's done correctly.
Yeah, and as Brian, that, that, the role of board members generally, just not yours, as I said, is to make sure that the process in place, you're not obligated to make sure the column's all foot and, and all of that, but make sure a robust process in place and also identify any particular items of concern of which you are aware are reflected in the official statement. And again, because of, because of the way you sort of do things with, between the CAFR and the actuary reports, and also one document I know that's coming out in, in June or July is you have sort of a risk report effort underway. That, as a disclosure counsel, is just perfect timing because you will have a very focused self-examination of risks right before the bond offering. So that'll be a very good check to make sure that investors are aware of everything that you're aware of.
Very cool. Any other questions? That does us. Julie, do you have anything else?
No, that concludes our prepared remarks.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Mike. We really appreciate you coming.
I appreciated the vice chair's comment that was fascinating because the first time I've ever been told that what we do for a living is fascinating.
I have to say, I'm trying to be a trustee and learning something new every day.
Absolutely. All righty. Moving on to our next item. Ashish, Andrew, and Graham. Andrew, you should have this big smile on your face, your last report, do you? Congratulations, Andrew.
Thank you.
I am sad.
We are sad, but we're very happy at the same time.
Thank you.
Excited to bring you.
Ready?
All righty.
So before we start, I just want to have a few words, you know, my co-sponsor, Andrew.
Absolutely. Where's my Kleenex?
I think this is a, you know, very complex and large project, and from day one, Andrew is here presenting with me, working very hard to make this project on track and focused. He's, you know, one of the best business partner I can hope for.
There you go.
He works seriously, I think, it's so much in our organization going on, but I think Andrew, for last few years, I think, is always just talk about the technology, 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 but it's not all about technology. His business is leading the, from the front end and we provide all the support, but Andrew is very gracious and keep up with us day, you know, the weekends, weeknights, text messages, emails. I think it's just, is can't believe that how much hard work he did for us. So I still, you still have chance to, you know, change your mind if you want. I think we are very happy for the great opportunity he's getting, but I think we still... Yeah. And he's going Texas, you know, who will go there? But that's, that's another story. But I think few of them, you reach out to me, Andrew's leaving, what the gaps are, you know, how we will do. So I just let you know that we have a wonderful team, very confident team, business side and technical side. In the back of me, I can just point out a few folks, Jennifer, Gina, if you can stand up.
Yep, yep.
Prashant is leading all, you know, as you heard about Prashant. We have Jeff here. Jeff is the critical part of our change management.
You don't want to get up, Josh.
And, and Melissa Adams and Diane, and supported by a lot of directors, I think. We can't thank enough, you know. And top of that, I think the core team, the BCT, you heard about the business core team, the technical core team and all, they're listening now, but I think we don't take a moment to thank them, but I think it's a lot of hard work is going on.
Absolutely.
And, and this project, where we are in, in this phase, I think it's a lot of critical activities have, will be happening soon, but we are feeling very much, very confident about this, so.
Good team.
Thank you. So this is agenda.
We got to give Andrew.
We're going to celebrate tonight, right?
So this is our typical agenda. I think you raised some, you know, interest about the employer readiness, where we are on that one, so we will give you the update on that. We'll give you the update about our function rollouts. We'll talk about the demo. We'll talk about the challenges and mitigation and next step. So we'll take the turn. Andrew, this is your last for our...
Thank you, Ashish. And I just quickly would like to say, I echo Ashish's confidence in the team, and Ashish has been a terrific business partner. No matter what time, he's always responsive. So getting to the presentation. With the project objectives, you will continue to see these, for those of you who are new on the board. These are going to be the consistent theme because, of course, these objectives are why we are engaged in the project. Next slide. So the employer readiness update. I think the key elements of this slide, in terms of, you know, you can see the purpose in the outreach efforts, the things that I would like to kind of highlight here are that 83% of our external reporting partners engaged in the assessment effort. However, those 83% represent 97% of the volume of contributions reported to CalSTRS. So the vast majority of external reporting partners, in terms of the volume, have been engaged with through this process.
And then we're reaching out to everybody.
That is correct. We continue to reach out consistently to everyone. Super. In terms of the readiness assessment approach, we did engage, as most of you are aware, in pre-assessments from May through July of 2018. And the focus for those pre, for the assessments in general was the schedule of the project, the systems that are being used by our external reporting partners. We also engaged with stakeholders and wanted to, through this assessment process, understand what constraints our external reporting partners may experience. And when we say external reporting partner, you've heard us use the term employer sort of generally throughout this process. External reporting partners is a little bit more specific, and because as you can see through those outreach efforts, there's more than just county offices of education with whom we're engaging. Final purposes for the assessments were to determine the readiness for that functional rollout one, the soft launch, and to identify mitigation strategies that may be necessary as we move through that soft launch project. So in terms of the key, the key takeaways from the assessment, so the preliminary assessments are complete, we are finalizing the report. What we have learned is that 100% of our employers have expressed willingness to make the changes to that contribution file. They understand that the file is coming and generally understood the reason for the modifications that CalSTRS is requesting. Also, the external reporting partners expressed a willingness and a demonstrated capability to implement the system changes and pursue the new file format modifications necessary through that soft launch phase.
Very cool.
Also, the external reporting partners positively responded to our team's requests for increased engagement, and many of them do not plan to wait for the regulatory process to complete until they start making their modifications. Many of them are already moving forward with the steps necessary to initiate that process. Any changes that result from the, you know, potentially result from this regulatory process, the external reporting partners have requested that we communicate to them any changes as soon as possible. Finally, the external reporting partners were a little bit less interested in that employment file. As you know, the new file format is, consists of two separate files. There's the employment file, there's the contribution file. Most of the changes are going to be on the employee, on the employment file. And so that's really where the employers are more focused. They have the opportunity to manually input those as we go live, so that's all part of our strategy. Don't want to give you too many details, but just so that you're aware, our team is engaged with the external reporting partners at every level so that we can make sure they're as successful as possible as we go through this process.
Okay, so the functional rollout update. As you notice, I think this time we added glossy terms in your packet because we know that there are a few new board members. So we are, you know, so many acronyms going on in the pension solution project like CAT and UAT, what does that mean? The CAT is a contract acceptance test, is lead by CGI. They are doing, they started that one for FR1. This is very critical phase in the project where they will be preparing and testing from the system tests and all, and preparing to hand over to UAT. Our staff, where our staff will do the end-to-end process check, workflow check, our internal controls, if all is planned, the way is functioning. The implementation planning, as we just, you know, Andrew is talking about the employer readiness, I think it's a lot of change management and what the changes will happening when we will bringing the employer to the new system. And then top of that, I think the data conversion and data quality. I'm happy to say that I think we are moving into the very, very nice phase where the data quality and the data conversion fallout and all is under threshold and we are managing very nicely. The same thing in the rollout two. They are, this is, as you know, this is a very complex rollout. We have so many activities in parallel going for FR1 and FR2. We are reporting that this is also in schedule. And CGI provided, you know, the development and the unit test and the way we have a check and balance that how this, all, all the problems, the fallout is coming out. Right now, the team is working day in, day out with them to just to see if there's any early indication of something we have to adjust, the resource and this can set and all. FR3, I think we talked about a little in the past. We did in the fit gap, just like you heard in the past, we reported. The fit gap exercise is very critical for us and CGI to just come on the same page, what is, what we will be getting and what they are understanding, what our expectation are. So we kick off yesterday, the functional rollout three kickoff meeting for our fit gap. And in April to July timeframe, we'll be working through what is in there, what functionality will be included, and what our expectation and what CGI is understanding, and if we are, both are in the same page. So this is also is a very critical for our member facing customer service management and all. So we are working very closely with CGI to find out if, is anything, any requirements we need to, is a high level requirement, do we have to flush out a little bit more?
Okay, so for the NeoSpin software demonstrations, we have the third of five functional demonstrations. You may recall that we, when we went through that fit gap for the second functional rollout, we purchased four functional demonstrations, so this is a third of those additional four. And the most complicated to date in terms of the functionality that we tested, you can see some of that functionality up there. What, you know, the demonstration was overall positive, lots of great takeaways, the system is working as designed. What's especially confidence building about this particular presentation is, demonstration is it's the first one that included some of the calculation methodology or functionality. So that also went well. We are currently preparing for the fourth functional demonstration. This will be the largest to date and will include more of the calculation functionality as well as some of the adjustment functionality. So that is the most complex of the functionality that will be built into the system. So we are looking forward to that demonstration as well. And then that fifth and final demonstration will happen later in the year and will contain kind of a, it will take several days to get through and give the most comprehensive view into the system performance to date.
I think this is one of the best thing happened to our project, I think, the demo, where we are and how we check and balance. And for the last demo, Karen was here the whole day, and I think it's a very engaging demo about disability and all, but I think we didn't have too many gaps. I think in the end of the day, I think we're just checking that what we vision for that and how they, you know, we are building that software. So I think this demo, as we move progress a little bit more, will provide a little bit more confidence to our, you know, and the adding into the, our confidence level.
So in terms of the challenges and accompanying mitigations, the communication and collaboration that we talked about in the January board meeting has continued to improve. We are happy to report that CalSTRS and CGI have made significant strides in those, those areas and are working together well. Timing for that is great as we move into the soft launch, go live at the end of this year and all of the associated testing, as well as moving forward with the complications that, or the complexity that comes with the second functional rollout. We also, in terms of the scope containment, schedule control, that scope determination process will get a rigorous workout during the FR3 fit gap. And the good news is that we have already implemented that. We spent a long time negotiating through it. Both sides are sort of firmly aware of how that process works. So, and we have used it multiple times already. So as we go into the FR3 fit gap, that process is working as intended. Challenges, so that FR1, the functional rollout one soft launch and establishing those criteria, we've talked a little bit about what we've done in terms of the assessments with our employers. So we are confident moving forward that we will be able to move through the soft launch. At this point in time, testing is going as planned, we are on schedule. So indicators at this point in time are green in terms of moving forward with that soft launch. And the adoption by the new file, of the new file format by our employers, we are going through that regulatory process, so we will receive feedback on the new file format from the employers. We'll take that feedback into account, see what kind of, what the nature of the feedback is and what we may or may not need to do in order to address that and move forward from there. We should have more information about that process at the next board meeting. So our next steps involve that FR3 fit gap exercise. You heard Ashish talk about that. I agree with what he says, that, you know, this is the final fit gap exercise. And in addition to all of the FR3 functionality, there are certain things from the FR2 fit gap that we agreed to move forward and put into FR3. So there will be some complexity in this exercise. The good news again is that we have used this process before successfully, and we have a scope determination process developed and in place and ready to go. The employer readiness, we've talked about, those efforts are underway. We've got the preliminary assessment complete, and we are moving through the regulatory process, and we are getting ready for that fourth functional demonstration, which will also take place in the beginning of May.
Okay. Any questions we can take?
So thank you very much for the, for the presentation. I wanted to add a couple things. I'm really, really, you know, glad to hear that there was progress made on working through the issues that we talked about in January with CGI, and it looks like that is, is back on track. So that's, happy to hear that. I really liked the glossary that you included, and I know it was, it was probably an idea because of, we have some new faces on the board, but I, I think it would be great if you'd consider posting it on the board website because sometimes when I look for reference materials, I can't remember which board meeting we got them in. So if we could post that, that would be a, I think, a handy reference on an ongoing basis.
We'll do that.
And then my last just question is, I went back and looked at our prior board meetings, and back in November, as part of your presentation, there were a couple of visuals that you used, you know, that were separate from what Graham does, but it was a couple of graphs that show schedule status for the functional rollout phases. So, you know, I, I find that that kind of visual snapshot of where we are, looking at the different elements of the functional rollout, I think, based on actions taken and actions completed in the project plan, is helpful in addition to the write-up that you do. So I, you know, I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't know if, or if there's another method that you want to use, but I think having that visual and continuing to use it when you present, I think, would be helpful.
I will do that. Good feedback.
So that dovetails into our request that I have because I started thinking about it and how long we've been on this road and where we are. And I'm thinking, okay, we, I think maybe we're close to halfway through, but then it's like, I'm not sure. So I think having a timeline of the entire project and putting it through, and I think I, I thought about it when I saw the graphic that's the implementation of the three functional rollouts within the glossary. So if there's, I think having, I think having a ti, a visual timeline or something, I don't know if you're planning on keeping the glossary every time you have the report, but if we could maybe get that timeline somehow as an attachment to every report, it's makes it real, or a link to it, really, really, at this point, I think it's really, really helpful.
Yeah, we will do that.
Because if we are, are we pretty close to halfway?
I think we can.
We're, we're over halfway.
We're over halfway?
It'll be four years since we signed a contract.
Four years this year, so, in June. So I think it's a great feedback. I think we will provide you enough detail where, where we are and what is our plan. I think we already have, I think we just massage it in a way, either we will put in the TRV or we'll add always in, just like we are putting the objective, we will start with that one, where we are today. I think.
I think that'd be great. Have some sort of visual.